Good evening and welcome to the School District of the City of Dearborn. This is our regular meeting. Today is Monday, June 3rd, 2024, and 7:02, and I'll call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Trustee D'Ambrosio.
Here.
Trustee McDonald. Trustee Mosip.
Here.
Trustee Petchikoff.
Here.
Trustee Thor.
Here.
Trustee Watts here, President Berry.
Here, next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Mr. Mahmoud Abu Ross, Principal of Oakman Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. One, two, three.
Hi. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
My name is Ali Ishmael, and I am in fourth grade.
My name is Neela Zavlani, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Naya Bazey, and I'm in fifth grade.
Thank you, you did a good job. Thank you very much. Naya, where do you represent? Good job. One more round of applause. Thank you.
We have Ms. Rawan Horani, who is our PTA co-chair, core president. She wants to say a word about Oakman School.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. Oakman School is a shining example of excellence in education, boasting numerous points of pride. Academic growth is a top priority with students consistently demonstrating significant improvements in their studies and the school earning a reward school labeled by the state. But Oakman's impact extends far beyond the classroom. The school's emphasis on social-emotional learning, SEL, helps students develop essential life skills like empathy, self-awareness, and conflict resolution. Additionally, Oakman's extracurricular offerings are robust, featuring weekly open gym sessions for three to fifth, a thriving youth club, and a newly established student council that recently hosted mock elections and voting for all students. These initiatives foster a sense of community, leadership, and civic engagement, making Oakman a truly special place where students can grow, learn, and thrive. Thank you, Oakman.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update.
Good evening, everyone. As we enter the month of June here, I'm going to start with some agenda items. We have retirements today. I want to congratulate and thank the following individuals for their service to our district and students: Ann Leibek, Gina Pirana, Jennifer Pagowski, Christina Randall. Again, congratulations and thank you. Let's show our appreciation. And I will continue down my agenda items. I have, the first thing we have here under my commentary for non-agenda is Exchange Club Academic Awards, and I see some, I'm a member. I know Trustee D'Ambrosio is, and Don Mack, and I have Robert Platt here, and I know Dr. Mazerah. I think you're here for two groups. But we can bring you up, and I think Mr. Martin as well, right? And I'm going to join them at the podium.
Please.
Thank you.
President Berry, trustees, Ms. Harris. So this week, we'll celebrate with 1,600 graduates. And the meeting before that, we always get the opportunity to work with our community partners. The Exchange Club is one. Amicus will be next, to recognize students with the award for academic excellence. So at this point, I would like to call those students up along with the building principals. And Don will call them up and give them their award. Don?
Thank you. Greetings. My name is Don Mack. I am the current president of the Exchange Club of Dearborn Foundation. I am joined this evening by Exchange Club Foundation trustee and Dearborn School Board Member Patty Ambrosio, Foundation Vice President Robert Platt, and Board Director and Foundation Trustee Dr. Andrew Mazerah. And I also wish to recognize Exchange Member and Dearborn School Superintendent, or Dr. Glenn Maleko. Thank you. As I begin, first, I wish to thank the Dearborn School Board of Education and District Administration for permitting the Exchange Club to present its Academic Excellence Awards at tonight's meeting. As we are very pleased to recognize the 2024 Dearborn High Schools and Early College Students of Distinction. We also want to thank the high school principals and Executive Director Adam Martin for their help in administrating this awards program. It is greatly appreciated. The Exchange Club of Dearborn has been in existence for nearly 100 years. Throughout these years, the men and women of Exchange have raised funds for many local community programs and projects. Many of our programs are aimed at developing tomorrow's leaders. This evening, we are pleased to present the 2024 Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Awards. This year's recipients, named by their schools, will be given a one-time $1,500 cash gift to be used for education or any other purpose. The Academic Excellence Award Program aims to encourage and reward high scholastic achievement and assist recipients with the cost of furthering their education. It is now my honor to present the cash gift awards to each of our 2024 recipients. First recipient is from Dearborn High, and that is Kaseen Anderson. The next award recipient we recognize is from Fortson, Hassan Qasim. The third award recipient we recognize is from Edsall Ford, where I happened to go a long time ago. Kadija Rizvi. I hope I didn't mess up. That's the wrong one. I just take it back. You can't have that one. And... Finally, the award recipient from Henry Ford Early College. Neat program. Hadi Sawagan. One more thing. There's one catch to all this. Sometime within the next year, each recipient and a high school representative are to attend a local Exchange Club luncheon, as our guests, of course, and let our members know how you're doing in the next phase of your education or your life. We will contact the recipients in the next months ahead to find a convenient time for their visit. Again, congratulations to the award recipients and their families, and again, thank you to the School Board, School Administration, for your help and support. Thank you very much.
And I'll just continue the next item on my report from here. Exchange Club is a great, great group, and they do a lot of good work in the community. So appreciate your involvement and contributions. And the reason I came up too is Mr. Mara is here from Amicus, and he said, since I'm an Amicus member, make sure I come up to the podium. So the next, I'm going to have Mr. Martin come up. I know we have Mr. Rafferty as well, and Dr. Mazerah, and I'll ask Mr. Martin to come up for them.
Rick won't come up.
Oh, no? Okay. But he told me that I had to make sure I was up here. So you're...
The Amicus group is a bunch of businessmen and community activists that we get together, and we raise, we put a little bit of our own money together and give it out for some scholarships and some other worthwhile community activists. So we have three awards for the high schools. And the first one is going to be the easy one. Noah Bazi. She is an immigrant. She wants to become an attorney and work within our community. The next one is Nadia Elgebrah. She's National Honor Society. She wants to specialize in immigration law and work within our community here. And the third member is from Edsall Ford. He has a grade point average of 4.167, 24th in his class, and he would like to go to medical school and open up clinics to help other struggling immigrants that come to this country. Jafar Elgeran. That's it. Okay.
Thank you.
I always say we have many generous clubs and organizations in our cities, so we are blessed to have you. So thank you to the Exchange Club and Amicus Club Organization for all you do for our students. Congratulations to all the recipients of the awards. Thank you. Dr. Maleko?
Thank you. So going down my agenda items, I have also, the board will be approving tonight on the agenda, district membership for MHSAA. It's up for renewal. So that'll be on the, that is on the agenda. I also just wanted, this is graduation season. We had the scholarship events. There's been a lot. We appreciate all the organizations in the community supporting our students. It is a great time of year. I know several weeks ago, we had the early college graduation. Today, I went to a wonderful ceremony for certificate of completion for a student, Hussain El Hashami, from Howe that received the certificate, and it was a great ceremony for him, so congratulations. And then tomorrow, I know we have Adult Education Magnet and Virtual, Thursday, Fortson, Friday, Edsall Ford, and Saturday, DHS. I know we all look at the weather report going in. I don't want to jinx it, but it looks pretty favorable right now, so let's just hope that there's no changes to that. And look forward to seeing all of our graduates, and I know all the board members will be there. We'll look forward to seeing you at the different schools over the next course of the week. Congratulations. The other thing is there's lots of school events. I know the board members, I've seen them out at field days and promotion ceremonies, and our promotions are coming up. We've had cleanup parades, we have ice cream socials, all sorts of things that were going around. Some of us are getting pie in our face for good causes, including me tomorrow, but I used to do it at the vault. So we all pay our dues to support the students, and it is a very exciting, positive time of the year. Appreciate all of our administrators, teachers, parents, PTA, everyone who's involved, supporting our students, everybody. So the other thing, I just have an update. I know this was something that the board and President Berry and others had asked for, and Ms. Faraj and Mr. Martin gave an update last month. But we continue to make progress on the middle school and high school task force. I know there was a meeting today that Ms. Faraj said, just today, with principals. They've already presented their plan to the curriculum council for approval. We have teachers and administrators that are on this committee so that we're getting input from across the board. But the report that I got from Ms. Faraj today was that it's going very well and glad that we're making progress and ready to go for next year. The other, and actually, that's all I have, under other.
Okay, great, thank you. Next item, please.
Recognition and...
Hold on one second. Trustee Petchikoff, sorry.
I was going to save this for board commentary, but because we're having so many celebrations of graduates, and we spoke about it, I just have one quick message I'd like to give while everybody's in the room. This week is going to be a celebration of commencement ceremonies back-to-back-to-back, and I would just like to recognize the additional hard work and extra effort all those students who have earned their diplomas this year have made in an effort to walk at their graduation ceremonies, and that we truly appreciate, because this is what we're here for, is this culmination of reward of a diploma at the end of their school experience. And so I would just like to thank all those students who put forth all that hard work and are now going to be celebrated this week and honored by all their parents and family, and that we get an opportunity to celebrate with them.
Mr. Thor?
Piggybacking off that, also thanks to all the district employees that are working behind the scenes at the graduations to make it a memorable event for our graduates and their families.
Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Please introduce yourselves.
My name is Hassan Qasim, and I go to Fortson High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hibba Bade, and I also go to Fortson High School.
Okay, thank you.
Commendations to Edsall Ford track athletes Fiona Kane and Ava Steinhebel for qualifying for the state track meet. At the Downriver League meet, Ms. Kane broke the school's long jump record with a jump of 18 feet and 1 inch. She went on to take fourth place in the state long jump competition over the weekend. Ms. Steinhebel took 18th place at the state meet for high jump. Commendations to Edsall Ford 10th grader Hussain Ahmed, who was honored with the United Nations 7th Annual National Community Service Award. She was recognized for the impact of her community service and is an inspiration for other students to get involved in their community. Commendations to the Edsall Ford High School theater students who were recognized at the 38th Annual Dearborn Area Theater Association Awards Gala in May. Winners include Mathias Erman for outstanding achievement, featured actor in a play; Marley Beck for properties design; Margaret Cascaden for choreography, makeup, and hair; Dylan Charles for costumes design; Gioya Lirini for choreography, costume, sound design; Maryam Hosseimi for costume design; Lucas Dobos for lighting design; and Dahlia Nedzynskis, Julia Tate, and Emmy Walinski for stage management. Commendations to Edsall Ford High Language Arts teacher Keith Ridsick. Mr. Ridsick was recognized as an outstanding teacher during the FLYPS Scholarship Dinner. Commendations to Edsall Ford High Auto Teacher Marissa Renaud and her students for being recognized by State Representative Erin Brynes for the recent award on the electric vehicle the students created.
Commendations to Dearborn High teachers Jane Peash and Brian Myersco, who taught a new geometry in construction class this year. The class paired geometry with construction so students can see real-world math applications. As a capstone project, the students built a playhouse to donate. Master carpenter Jim Peash also assisted with the project. Commendations to the Edsall Ford High baseball and softball teams. Both teams recently won their district championships. Commendations to Edsall student Blake Deckert, who qualified for the MHSAA Boys State Golf Championships. He will compete this Friday and Saturday in Battle Creek. We wish him good luck. Commendations to Dearborn High girls soccer team for winning the district championship on Friday night. The team is coached by Tony Ventura, Mo Anani, and Alex Higgins. Commendations to Dan Toso, engineer at Lori School. He was praised for developing a positive culture while maintaining an older building and keeping it working well and looking great. He works from his heart, and his passion for his work is evident in all that he does to maintain Lori. Commendations to O.L. Smith teachers James Radcliffe and Gillian Sharkey for all their extra effort in planning during the recent student trip to Washington, DC. A parent chaperone shared that both teachers were organized, patient, and enthusiastic, making sure the kids were safe, having fun, and of course, learning. Mr. Radcliffe and Ms. Sharkey exemplify the caring staff at Smith. Commendations to Oakman Principal Mahmoud Abu Ross. He recently received a citation from the Dearborn City Council praising his leadership at Oakman, particularly for the school's kindness club. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, the aspiring administrators' recognition.
So I'm going to call it Ms. Faraj, who's going to bring up some of the administrators, aspiring administrators. And we appreciate Ms. Faraj and others taking a lead with this program. I know it's very important.
Thank you. Good evening, President Berry, board trustees, and Dr. Maleko. I'm going to ask the teachers and the principals who are here to support them, who completed this year's cohort of aspiring administrators, to come up here to be recognized. Just say a few words about the program, and then if any of the aspiring administrators would like to say a few words, we can give them the mic. As part of our commitment to develop leadership from within Dearborn Public Schools and increase the leadership capacity of our employees, I just have to mention that when we have interviews, they always stand out to be exemplary in terms of leadership, best practices, and whatever it is we're looking for. We have once again offered another cohort of the aspiring administrators program during this past school year. Teachers from various buildings had the opportunity to apply for this program to explore various leadership roles in our organization. This year, we took everyone who applied, and we figured that it would be a great experience for teachers who are voluntarily attending monthly meetings to be aspiring administrators. We had around 20 participants. Of the 2015, completed the program and received certificates of completion signed by Dr. Maleko. The rest of the group will have the opportunity to continue with a new cohort next year if they missed a few sessions. We hold interactive sessions presented by district leaders from various departments. There was a principal panel where we called a few principals, and they have interactive sessions with them. We had operations session, finance, communications, special pops, this is including EL and special ed. What does leadership would look like in these specific departments? School improvement assessment, interviewing, and teacher evaluation by HR, and other topics as we see would be beneficial for the aspiring administrators. At the end, actually, they work on this throughout the year, which is a capstone project where they demonstrate leadership not only in their classrooms, they have to extend it beyond their classrooms. And they often ask, can we see samples? And we say no. So they never fail to present a great capstone project where they have experienced leadership and extended it with their teams in their buildings or across the buildings. Many times, the leadership project that they presented was an SEL, which is a great leadership opportunity as well for the future. And they also shadow an administrator for one half-day throughout the district. They get to select who they want to shadow. Successful completion of the program is an important component of the preparation for an administrative position in Dearborn Public Schools and elsewhere. I would like to invite Doug. Do you want to say a few words?
Good evening. My name is Douglas Radcliffe, and I'm a social studies teacher at Dearborn High School. On behalf of the participants of the 2023-2024 cohort of aspiring administrators, I would like to offer a few words of appreciation for the leadership teams that worked to create this opportunity for us this year. I would like to start by thanking Dr. Maleko and the Board of Education for encouraging programs such as this one to run. It is honestly a privilege to work in a district so dedicated to developing leaders from within its staff. I would also like to thank all of the administrators and staff members from Dearborn Public Schools who have given their time to act as presenters for this year's cohort of aspiring administrators. Most of all, I would like to thank and recognize Dr. Faraj for organizing such a well-structured and planned learning opportunity for us. This program provided an excellent opportunity to learn, gain leadership experience, and network within the district outside of our buildings. Whether they decide to pursue educational leadership in the future or not, every participant in the program is a better educator for having participated in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. No, we're good. Thank you. Oh, yeah, of course. They want to take a picture.
There's got to be a sign somewhere that I could use.
I have one left over from Memorial Day.
One more round of applause. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting: Finance Committee meeting, May 13th, 2024, Board Report 23-131; Regular P-12 meeting, May 13th, 2024, Board Report 23-132; Policy Committee meeting, May 20th, 2024, Board Report 23-133; Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So move.
Support.
Motion moved by Trustee D'Ambrosio, supported by Trustee Thor. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous motion of approval. Thank you. Next action item.
Special reports, Superintendent Student Advisory Council, Ms. Lola Rose Song, Ms. Harmony Morales, Ms. Micah Mitchell, and Ms. Ma'ya Mughni.
And I know we have Dr. Swedan here, who does an outstanding job, even though she never wants to get in those photos.
I was going to say, she wants to get before the camera.
But it is required, I think, right? But anyway, this has been nine years. This is my favorite thing. Part of my job is interacting with students. I know we've had other districts that are replicating. We've presented at state and national conferences, but really, it's just getting with the students. So as they come up, I just want to report too that we're looking at, now that we've done nine years, going to 10. You know, some of the former alumni that I've met with just recently, Kareem Kadu, who's a couple of years ago graduate. I just met with him this past week, and he's doing very well in his college program, and he's also got an internship in Washington, DC. Another student from a few years back, and the board will remember this pre-pandemic, Abak Med, who used to come to all the meetings, met with him a couple of weeks ago, and he's doing very well. He's actually going to Georgetown for his master's degree, and he's working for the Department of State overseas. Actually has a job set up with them, with the US Department of State. So, you know, we have a lot of students that are successful, but this is where, you know, it's very exciting for me. I told them, stay in contact, and, you know, they do great work. And so I'm going to churn it over to them, but I can tell you, this is a great thing, and we're all about students. And so I appreciate Dr. Swedan's leadership and all the students on the council for a great year.
All right, good evening, board members and attendees. My name is Lola Rose Song. I'm currently a junior at Edsall Ford High School, and I am a member of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council.
Good evening. Thank you all for your opportunity and allowing us to be here today. My name is Ma'ya Mughni, and I am a graduating senior at Dearborn High School.
Hello, everyone. I'm very excited to see you all today. My name is Micah Mitchell, and I am a junior at Henry Ford Early College.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Harmony Morales, and I'm also a junior at Dearborn High School.
All right, so anyone who isn't...
It's open to grades 10 to 12, and we meet, we meet monthly. So our members include people, students that attend Dearborn High, Edsall Ford, Fortson, Dearborn Virtual, DC MST students, and Henry Ford Early College. They're all dedicated, valuable members of our community, and they're working hard to improve our district every day.
So lately, there has been an issue with vaping in the U.S. all over the country, and we have established the anti-vaping committee to try and tackle that within this district. Recently, we came up with a presentation that combined both a preventative strategy to educate middle schoolers on the dangers of vaping before they have the chance to start with resources to help them recover from any vaping addiction they may have. We also, earlier in the year, worked on the military role. This was a very important project for the district, and students took an initiative with various strategies, social media, and encouraging seniors to vote in order to get this military proved, and they were very successful with that. So we also have our MLK Service Day. We know that Martin Luther King was very big on community service and serving the community, so we wanted to honor his legacy with this. We did this by going to Fish and Loaves, which is a food drive, and we helped package things. We also helped elderly in the winter with shoveling their driveways, and we had a food drive for First Step and PCRF within our individual schools.
So a few months ago was Rotary Youth Month. Excuse me. And every single week, we had a couple selected students through SSAC where we went to three of the Rotary meetings. I believe it was in May or March. Okay, I got it. Mr. Thorf was actually very helpful, helpful throughout it. He spoke about incoming and outgoing students who study abroad. His daughter actually was an outgoing student, and Rye was, he was a host family for Rye. So we learned a little bit about that program, that Rotary hosts. We also learned valuable leadership skills and about scholarship programs, the abroad program I spoke about, and much more great things that Rotary does in our city and beyond. We also had Care to the Core Day, which was a district-wide event. A group of SSAC members went to multiple middle schools and elementary schools. We just taught them valuable skills about leadership, kind of, we talked about what we did as a group, and also taught SEL, social emotional learning, things that were at a level that they could understand because we tend to focus on it at the high school level, but not so much at the middle school and elementary school level. So we had comprehensive games and tasks that we could go over with the younger students in our school district. On my last point about going to the middle schools, we also had two lead students, Emmy and Jaslyn, who were, who went to UNICEF specifically and talked to the students about the history of racial slurs and why Dearborn Public Schools does not tolerate the use of these words that are very offensive to groups of individuals. We also went to middle schools at South Middle Schools, and we, like I said on the last slide, kind of through Care to the Core, we talked about social emotional learning.
Another one of our initiatives was March's Reading Month. So in honor of March's Reading Month, a group of SSAC students visited elementary schools like Howard and Lindbergh with storybooks in order to foster connections with our younger students and emphasize the importance of literacy at a young age. We also did multiple school improvement feedback within our council. So this year, SSAC students gathered feedback regarding security guards, student mental health within the building, and cafeteria food, the bathroom status of our high schools, and also about future outbreaks. And with that, we would like to thank you so much for this opportunity to present on our SSAC initiatives, and we are open to any questions.
Mr. Pachkov.
I'm just curious, you young ladies have been everywhere in the district, and that's a lot of time spent away from your normal classroom day. How do you balance all of this?
So the most important thing is just making time for other things outside of this meeting, but also our advisors, Dr. Maleko, Dr. Swedean, and Ms. Musa, who help us monthly meetings. To answer your question, we do, we send out Google Forms to our school committee or to, like, mass emails that our principals may send out just to gain feedback. We also have meeting, like, kind of homework where we, Dr. Swedean will assign us to go back to our schools and talk to a group of 10 to 15 students and get feedback about what they think about our exam, about our bathrooms, for example. And we come back and discuss it at the next meeting and talk about what we can do to tackle our students' concerns.
Mr. Thor?
Each year, it's a process of interviews for students that are interested. For the students that might be interested in participating next year, what would be some words that you would share with them to encourage them or enlighten them on what they should expect?
Honesty is key. Be honest. Dr. Maleko, Dr. Swedean, they don't want to see, they want to see your true colors. They want to get to know you before they even know you, because once you get on that board, you become so close with everyone on the board, and then you're, like, just true colors really show through. So just be honest. Don't be afraid to step up and take an initiative. Put yourself out there. This board gives you lots of opportunities, even if you may not have 100 volunteer hours or so much experience on other councils. They don't necessarily always look at that. They're looking for the character, they're looking for the drive, they're looking for the passion, because that's truly what the students on the board have. And so just don't be afraid to apply. It doesn't hurt. You never know. I didn't even know if I was going to make it on this board, but I'm really grateful I'm here today.
Anybody else? Just a quick follow-up on Trustee Moser's question. That was going to be my, one of my questions, so I'm glad to hear that there's connections with you and your fellow students at each high school. I guess my question would be that, okay, so you bring some of the issues from your, from your fellow students to the, to the boss and the other administrators, great leaders in our district. Do you feel like you're making a difference? I'd like to hear from at least a couple of you on it. Please.
As you may have seen from the school improvement feedback slide, yes, we do feel pretty heard. Like, Micah was able to lead the anti-vaping committee to talk to middle schoolers and educate them about, like, the importance of not using substances. And that was a concern that we brought up, which was vaping within our schools. So that was one of the, one of the examples of many of the initiatives that we were able to start up as a result of what we have seen.
Thank you. Somebody else?
I also think that with this board, it's very important to, for us to know that we reach out to all the students in the district, and it's very important that they know that they have a voice in this district, because, like, students first, that's the whole message. And that's very important for them to know that they have a hand in their own education and for them to know that they have a say in how things get done and that they're not just being pulled along and feel like they have no say and they might be left behind. So this board is a great way for them to be able to really stand up for their own kind of education.
Great, thank you. I knew the answers, I just wanted to hear them again, because long, a few years ago, we used to hear from students that their voices aren't being heard. I'm thankful to Dr. Maleko for creating this advisory council, and it seems like everything's going in the right direction. So thank you very much. I applaud you. Yes, please.
So just along with that, I think it's, it keeps me, you know, close to the students, and the one thing I really appreciate is I'm not connected to direct building. So this is a group that, you know, a teacher or a principal, they're with a group, and it gives me a constant group. The other thing they didn't mention, but we're constantly sending messages on the WhatsApp chat, so even though they're meeting monthly, there's positive messages, there's a lot of work getting done as well within the group, and I see it. The other thing it does, and I will say too, I'll use one example. Years ago, the council asked about the food service we were providing, and look, we ended up changing our whole model because it started with the students. That's just one of many examples, you know, of how they've had an impact. So I think it also helps, because I know sometimes the board would come from policy committee and say, oh, we got this issue, maybe on dress code or other things. What do the students think? So we can go to the students, and we have a direct connection to get that info. And I know Dr. Swedean and Ms. Musa, they do a great job, but one of the things she does say to Trustee Moser is she makes sure that when you come on, you know you're representing your school, and you have an obligation to do surveys and connecting, and you heard from what they say. But you can see why I'm so proud of them. Look at Bright Future in Dearborn and, you know, really in this state and country because of the work that they do, and very proud of the students. I'm glad I get to meet with them on a regular basis, because I learn a lot from them and appreciate it.
Trustee Moser? Thank you.
Yeah, I, Dr. Maleko, I do believe that we also have a kind of micro sample of this at the middle school where students are also advising now the executive directors.
Correct. Yes, so that, so they, I think they would go back and they would promote it so that it gives them kind of a taste of what they could get involved with. So all the executive directors lead, and I know, for example, Mr. Martin invited me recent, about a month ago to Lori, where they had some initiatives they wanted to present. I went, he runs it with the middle schoolers and Ms. Farage and Ms. Sure, but, you know, they presented, and I think, but one of the things we have decided is we, we have, to this point, not allowed freshmen because we want them to get situated in the high school, but we also learned over time is, you know, those that started the middle school, then they're hungry for maybe getting into the high school. And then the nice thing is, you know, some of the graduates, well, they have the institutional knowledge because they've been on the committee for more than one year. I think that was an important aspect as well. So thank you, trustee.
Thank you.
The principals also have their own advisory now.
Yes.
And that was started probably a few years ago, where they have a group that they meet with, so those who don't make it on our campaign, we will send them the names of the teachers so they can do it.
So I know she's not at the mic because she's shy and not come up to the mic, she knows we'll take her picture, but, and get a selfie. But anyways, that's an ongoing thing. The students will, got my back on that one, they send me the photos anyway, by the way, Dr. Swedean. But anyway, she was just saying that the principals, for those at home couldn't hear on the microphone, that the principals are also running the council, from the principal advisory council, so it's following a similar model.
Can I ask though? I want to make sure that we have a wide variety of voices then, because if everybody's kind of going up the feeder chain and we maintain just the same kind of student body, so do we mix it up in the schools with the principals having a whole different group of students as opposed to Dr. Maleko as opposed to middle?
Well, I'll comment unless you want to come up to the mic, Dr. Swedean. But she does a great job, and honestly, the first year we did it, we realized that we had more of a similar group that was represented, right? Dr. Swedean is outstanding at getting a diverse body. She looks at the applications, and that is a primary thing that she looks at, diversity meaning a lot of things, from different schools, from different backgrounds, different levels. So I'll let her speak.
So we actually don't have a lot of students on the council that were at SETSEC.
Okay.
So we're not, because I think you want a new voice and you want...
A new perspective.
Yeah, yeah, and I think they've had leadership opportunities, and hopefully then they can continue that with other things going on in their school. And we're not excluding them, but we really are trying to be mindful to make sure that we have, we hold space for all our students. And so it does usually take a good, I mean, it takes us usually a month in the beginning to try to get a diverse sample, and we send out the applications, and then we also personally invite, or principals will personally invite, I mean, there are certain people on the council who did not initially fill out an application, but we were looking at what we had, and we thought, we don't have a diverse sample, and it just wouldn't be fair. So, so we do some of that. We try to be as fair as possible so that everyone feels like they have a voice, because if you're going to go back and talk to your peers, we want to make sure that you, all the peers are represented, not just, you know, the select group, the privileged group. I mean, we, you know, we try as best as we can.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good question. Great question. Excellent. Thank you.